Two is an amendment to the Laramie Comprehensive Plan 2007 Future Land Use Plan, map 3.2. Are we really going to talk about this?
Honorable Chair and Planning Commission, these two items are interrelated. The next two ones is the land use plan change and a zoning, so I might as well just go ahead and do the presentations both together. The applicants have also prepared a PowerPoint that they would like to load up to sort of describe what their vision is for the area. So we have that PowerPoint up here, so they'll be doing a presentation just a little bit on their proposed development out there.
Okay.
But, long story short, what they are proposing to do here, and actually, is they're proposing a land use plan amendment for the area. Right now, actually, if I can just pull up the, sorry, I'm going to end this show real Let me go ahead and pull up the land use. Do you guys all have the map in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, I can just describe it that direction instead of doing it on the screen, so it'll be easier. If you look at the property over here, the majority of it is actually presently shown as auto-urban commuter, auto-urban commercial on our future land use plan. Those are those northern two lots. And the southern lot is shown as auto, or is shown as urban residential. The auto-urban commercial land use category, that supports a variety of zoning. It supports B1 zoning, B2 zoning, and C2 zoning. The urban residential, well, that is your more dense neighborhood land use category, so it supports R3 zoning. Over the years, the landowner has attempted to try to develop that in a variety of ways. He's tried to develop it as multifamily in the past, several different times, and it has not been able to work for him. In the past, the planning commission had approved a conditional use permit for that northernmost lot to actually change, to develop that as a mini storage complex. That never came to fruition. Now, one of his more recent development proposals is to build a mini storage complex at that location. However, this mini storage complex would be a little bit larger than the previous one that was approved. That prior one that was approved, it was approved back in, I think it was 2011, it's stated in the staff report here. Actually, it was 2008. That one has expired because it was not constructed within a year of that approval. So, in looking at this application, you know, staff has noted that this land has had vacant since it's been plotted. It is adjacent to the interstate, and really, it just hasn't developed as it is. It's really nice to see a developer proposal that could occur at this location. In looking at the step down in land use that you might have next to corridors such as an interstate, major streets, it does appear to be a logical amendment, because what this would do is establish a commercial area between the residential area to the west and also the interstate. Just because the applicant at this time is proposing to rezone it to B2 for a mini storage complex, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that that is what could be constructed there. If the land use plan amendment goes through, the rezoning does go through, a variety of commercial uses could be there. However, if any commercial use does end up at that location, it will still be expected to comply with our development standards, which include landscaping, buffer yards, lighting standards, and all of that you would generally see in a commercial site plan. So those landscaping and buffer yards would provide some type of buffer between the residential area to the west. Now, I should note that the land use in the area and the zoning, which you can see in the next item, the zoning is quite strange. In the area, if you take a look, Irma Court, which is, which is developed with mostly townhomes and duplex structures, with a couple of vacant lots, as well as the north side of Pearson Court, those are all zone B1 business, so they're all zoned for business. They also have the residential overlay for business, which allows for residential uses to exist. So, the land use category, if you will, and the zoning in the area really don't seem to align. But this neighborhood has developed, as it has developed today, with a variety of uses that do fall within their development plan. Now, regarding the status of, well, what happens if both of these items fail? Let's say the land use plan does not fail. If, or does not pass. If you're looking at the land use plan, the only portion of the development that is shown as urban residential is that southern lot. In theory, the zoning amendment could still be approved for the northern two lots, because the comprehensive plans, land use plan element, does support them. The southern lot would have to remain urban residential. That would likely change some of their development, but I will let the applicant discuss that. Now, let's say the, what's the difference between the B1 zoning and the B2 zoning in that location? Really, for this project, mini storage complexes are allowed in the B1 district, they're also allowed in the B2 district. The only difference is a B1 district would require approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant has met with staff early on to decide what they believe was the most appropriate way to move forward. They've decided to apply for the B2 rezoning. The reason why is to eliminate the conditional use permit process. What that does for them in a phased development is it allows for them to develop the first phase and then not be stuck on a certain timeline for a second phase, because conditional use permits are typically approved with an approval period of six months and up to a year. So that is their main reason for requesting the B2 zoning instead of the B1 zoning that exists for the northern lots. Right now, as it stands right now, you know, the land use plan, kind of, the land use plan does show the areas urban residential, and there are lots that are zoned business in the area. Those business lots could be developed with businesses today. Likewise, the middle lot, which is zoned R3 multifamily, but shown as future commercial on the land use plan, that middle lot could be rezoned to commercial, because our land use plan calls for that, and that is the direction we're supposed to move forward to. So with that, staff has reviewed both of these, both of these applications. We are supporting the land use plan amendment to change that southern lot to suburban commercial. We recommend approval of that, so that will match the parcels to the north. Likewise, we are also supporting the rezoning request to the B2 for those three parcels to be rezoned to B2. The applicants are present, they have a presentation they'd like to make, and I'm open for any questions you may have. Yes?
Are there any, we had wetland issues with the Adventure Dodge property at the east end, and this is contiguous with that, with that area. Are there any wetlands issues with this?
Honorable Chair and Commissioner McGrath, I'm not aware of any issues. I believe those were taken care of with the subdivision back when it was subdivided. I would ask that question be directed towards the applicant. They have better knowledge on the soils in that area.
Can you give me a better idea of the types of uses that could be allowed here, and just so I can get a sense of who these might impact, or who the uses might impact?
Honorable Chair and Commissioner Picarelli, regarding the potential uses that could be in a B2 district, it's typically everything that you would see on Grand Avenue. Your types of businesses such as restaurants, an auto dealership, an office, a dental office, you could see apartments. Basically, it's all of your retail and professional office services, those ones. Uses that are excluded are ones that are heavily outdoor, storage-oriented, or industrial or manufacturing uses. So generally, item, things you would see either along, you know, Grand Avenue, along your business corridors in town.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for staff? I think we're ready for the opponent.
I'm Paul Hoffman, and I've got both Kathy Mathis, who is the land planner for this project, and then Brandon and Tony are the actual developers who are Grow Your Storage, which is the storage group that's going to build this facility. I wanted to speak to a couple of things. One, your question on the wetlands on the north there. So this development was done prior to them ever being around and coming in. We have a, basically, a berm that has a drain pan in it along the north side of the developmental preschool, the two hotels comes and wraps around this property, and then heads south along the far east side in one of the easements. So we've handled all of our drainage into a drainage pond down on the very far southeast end of the property. I don't know how they've released the water, or if they're holding the water in the wetlands, because I know probably five acres of that site is wetlands up there where Adventure Dodge built. I don't know what their plan is for the wetlands there.
Growing hay.
Yeah, so I'll see if I can run this. I'm going to run through the first few slides just to kind of, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm probably out of order, but do we have, do we have grade from the northeast corner to the pond in the southwest corner?
Yes, it actually goes all the way from the northwest corner, drains all the way behind those, the commercial buildings, the hotels, stays in a pan, comes all the way around this site. Jump ahead on this. Right click. I want to go down. Wow, this is a weird mouse.
Oh, cool.
I was just going to show you that drainage swell better than try.
Yeah, you should be able to go.
Yeah, so that drainage swell starts here, falls all the way down to where the green lines are. There's three easements along there, Y dot, utility, and then drainage, falls a drainage easement, it comes all the way down. This panhandle-shaped lot is the drainage that's designed to hold that, and then it has a release rate that goes out of that. So the entire area plus city will require us to provide that, but the entire area was master planned for drainage.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's right. I'll jump back real quick, I'll let them speak more to the zoning, but some of you do know me, and I've been on this project since about 2001. The south portion of Westfield is approximately, oh, I think I counted it for this, yeah, 70 single-family homes that my original plan there was for an affordably priced neighborhood in Laramie, and that's worked out very well. It's been done in three phases. The second phase came in, I built most of the homes in the first phase. Second phase, there were other builders that came in, and then we just finished Irma Court, which was mentioned. It had 32 twin homes on it, and then one single-family lot. One of the things I would point out at Westfield, see if I can find it here, we always had plans for the residential, there's 50 acres total, so residential was always planned on the south end, commercial on the north end, and as they grew together, trying to buffer them. So that's why Irma Court became the buffer to allow for that transition to commercial. And then Hospice came along with a very nice transition for the neighborhood, where it's a commercial building with a very residential soft feel to it, very needed neighborhood. And then, we of course have the hotels and stuff to the north, so then what we're trying to rezone and build on in the green there is really, you probably couldn't fit a better business use in there than a self-storage. The traffic counts that come in and out of there will be very low, the height of the building will be, you know, all one-story, so other than a couple of towers that we'll show you in a minute, there are more visual elements, they might be 16 feet tall, but most of the buildings are probably 12 to 14 feet tall. So this makes a very nice buffer to the interstate to keep kind of the noise back, all the reasons that you want to buffer that. And then there are new twin homes that have been put in along Evan Street there that would look directly at it. You'll see some of the design stuff that the fellows can go through and kind of talk you through, the designs that they've done in other communities and how the project works. Charles did mention there have been different things looked at on these sites. This is a different group than looked at the 2008 application for the self-storage. What that group found, not only was the economy changed, and they were not experts in self-storage, but the site was too small. So that's why these other lots are being added to this, to do the larger one. Again, this has kind of been my project out there since 2001. We've got the Marriott Fairfield, the Comfort Inn, the Hospice, the developmental daycare, which was actually an attempt at trying to get an office building out there that just never took off, and we ended up selling it to them, and I believe that's worked out very well. I guess I already said that. So then, with that said, you can kind of see the zoning questions that we have. This site actually, how would I want to say it? It kind of got caught, I think, in the zoning changes that they did back in Bob Juvie's day, because there was actually an angular line that went through there. They kept the larger lot, which I call Block Eight or Fox Edition, they kept that in the rob overlay, which always, I think, is how it should have been, but then the stuff along the interstate, they allowed that zoning to be modified without the rob overlay, so I kind of got what I got, and now we're just working through that. And there's no real issues with it, it's just that we don't fall under that rob overlay anymore, which makes it a little bit harder to get the zoning the way we want it. I'm more of a project person than a zoning person, so I can't really tell you too much on the rest of it. So, I'll let Brandon and Tony come up here, unless you have questions for me, and they can kind of talk about what their plans for the construction and development and the material types are for this.
I have one question.
Sure.
It has nothing to do with the whole thing. Who owned that 50 acres? Was that part of the cartels?
Oh, no, oh, come to me. C.L. Burton.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so C.L. Burton bought it, actually, a little quick history, so C.L. Burton had it. I bought this 40 acres from C.L. Burton, and it had the original farmhouse on it down here, so I bought that 40 acres, and just as I was about done designing it, Petro put that, where the B1 is on, that 10 acres up for sale. The reason Centennial Drive is where it's at is because that's the water and sewer lines that they needed when they went out there, so then I kind of reshuffled and created the whole thing.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, with a use such as storage units, do you have some sort of comparative measure between what an R3 district could be, like multifamily housing? I'm guessing that it would be something like condos go in there that's similar to other locations in this area, and what a storage unit would be?
There probably would be apartments if they were multifamily, would be my guess. And the trip count that we saw was, I think on the traffic survey, was it like two cars an hour or a day?
I think it was two cars an hour with like a peak of like four.
Yeah, so, so four cars an hour versus a multifamily, which we haven't really studied, but I have looked at, you could put probably about 80 units in, in just the two acres, sorry, the two lots to the south, because I have looked at multifamily there. You could probably get 80 units there, so I don't know what that compares to in trip count, but obviously, there would be a lot more traffic with 80 units leaving every day.
Okay, and then, if it's okay with the chair, I have one more question. Thank you. And this may be better answered in the next section. Where is the ingress and egress from, from this project going to be?
Oh, I'll let them take it from there.
Perfect.
Even though I like to talk a lot. I will tell you, it's two phases. So this is the second phase, that we will combine the entire section, and then the main office will be here. There will be the ability to come out on this curve. We were actually approved when they did the, the first self-storage 10 years ago, to put that entrance in on the corner and actually cut across the yard of the hotel. So this really makes that egress a lot better.
Thank you.
Mr. McGrath? Just, just personal curiosity, if you could put 160 units on the total property or in that range, you're just not an interest in people wanting to develop it in that manner? Or is it the proximity to the interstate? The demand for housing in Laramie, that, I think it'd be kind of material in a sense to a lot of things we deal with. Why this is being developed as a, as a storage units, which have high cash flow, just like R3, but, you know, just, some of the background on that decision?
Sure, I'll back up a couple of slides again here. So then, I looked at doing just that, and what we were planning on doing is starting multifamily on this end and looking at what might come here, like self-storage. The fellow that I'm working with on that, who was a partner with me in the second phase, he knew Brandon and his team, which is Grow Your Storage, and they, that's all they do is self-storage. So, we thought, well, wouldn't that be neat if they come down this way and we build multifamily north? So, right now, I would like to think apartments or townhomes could go on this lot, but I'm not working on that right now, but that's a pretty strong probability. And then Brandon and his team are working south. Well, as he got, looking at the feasibility study and everything else, he realized that they needed more land to do at least 50,000 square feet of storage, potentially 75,000. So then, he needed more land, so we sold that land to his team, and we still have this down here for housing. And personally, for me, universities are tearing down dorms, but they're putting new ones up. There's a lot of subsidized multifamily that is tough for private developers to compete to, and so, until that changes, we'll just keep figuring out if, if townhomes. The other thing with Laramie is people would prefer to own, so we're sensitive to making sure whatever product goes in there next to the interstate would be something we could sell.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I'm not sure what that multifamily might look like.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of me before they show you more? All right.
Please sign in. Yeah, she's not going to let you talk, I can tell you.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandon Greby, I'm with Grow Your Storage, as Paul mentioned, and working with them on the mini storage facility. So I'll kind of walk you through the layout, the aesthetics, the architecture, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, so.
Okay.
I think this is a point. Okay. So as mentioned, we're looking at doing it in two phases, just so we don't overbuild initially. With the first phase, having an office and retail space, so the facility will have a manager and a couple of employees, and it's kind of standard working hours. And then it will have a mix of climate-controlled storage units, or that's temperature-controlled, as we're finding people like that amenity for storing products, as well as some kind of traditional and drive-up units. And it's a variety of different sizes, so people can store small belongings, as well as store outdoor gear, four-wheelers, things like that for hobby-based. So this is the layout. That dotted line running perpendicular is kind of where the Phase 1, Phase 2 is being looked at. And then it's a, it's a layout of buildings that work on the site, that work with existing easements, utilities, drainage, as well as accessibility and flow through, through the We like to do it, and I mean, it's part of just meeting design standards, but a professional landscaping package, we like our facilities to look good, that blend in with the community, are kind of compatible, so this is just a slide showing some of the potential landscape vegetation options to be used. Apologize, it's kind of hard to see, but just.
More trees is going to be a good sell.
What's that?
More trees.
More trees, absolutely. And then this is kind of a rendering of the model right now, and I can go back to the first one, but along, so kind of facing the, the current residences, it's been talked about, kind of that buffer, is that, the building that you're kind of looking at. So it'll have a stone base, some stucco and metal panels, and then some glass for just the leasing office to have natural light and, you know, people coming in. And then a mix of colors and varieties, and then that one area, kind of where our office is, we call it a tower element, but that's just that architectural element to kind of highlight where the entry is for customers to come in. Couple of things that have already been hit on, kind of a low-impact buffer to I-80, as mentioned. Inherently with self-storage, it's very low traffic impact or traffic counts. And then with that minimal noise, we did go, about two and a half weeks ago, I think on the 20th of last month, we did go hand out flyers to the current neighborhood in that area, kind of a courtesy notice, to all the residences and houses around there, and received no negative feedback and positive feedback. A lot of people were just happy to learn that something was going to be developed there. So, that's just part of kind of the community outreach. I'll go back just to this first, oh, even just the first, kind of show you, blown up, but happy to answer questions about the project.
Questions?
Yes.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I actually, to make a clarification, on some level, it would reduce the noise for the residents, right? Because you're putting something as a buffer, so minimal.
Correct.
Impact might actually be reverse impact. But, you know, the, the main complication or problem I would see with residents, and I'm surprised they didn't flag this, is you basically have a place that's open to the public, more or less, that the public's now visiting your backyard, and so there's probably like a safety concern or element that I'm surprised to hear the neighbors didn't flag.
So, let me go back to the site plan, kind of show you. So, it, it's private property, and the, there is a parking lot there that people could park in, but other than that, the facility is fully fenced with access control, and then security systems and surveillance, both on the outside and inside. So, obviously, the street's public, and anyone can drive through there, and then we have a parking lot for customers coming in, you know, leasing units, or we sell moving supplies. But other than that, it's a, it's a, it's a secure facility and secure site, where if you're a customer, you can come in through an access code, and then at that point, you're already been checked out and you have a lease, and then you're also a part of the surveillance camera.
And what hours can people access their storage?
Sure, so our, it's kind of standard hours of being open are typically nine to six, Monday through Saturday. And that's, that's with a staff and employees on site. If you're an existing customer, you can access your unit two hours before that or two hours after that, but, but that's it. So you, it's not open 24 hours a day even to customers. We do have a emergency number, because, you know, sometimes things happen, and you, if you have to get to your belongings off hours, but you need to call. you, if you have to get to your belongings off hours, but you need to call, basically you need to call the manager, and then they let you in on, you know, on a specific basis.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else need to speak to the commissioner? Let's have a motion. How do you want to do this? Two motions? So do the resolution first? Okay, let's have a motion for the resolution. Too many, you just beat up people.
I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one, amending the future land use plan map, map three point two of the comprehensive plan for the property described within the resolution, located east of the intersection of Evan Street and Irma Court, west of Interstate eighty for an area approximately one point nine acres in size, by changing the future land use designation from urban residential to suburban commercial based on the findings of fact and the conclusions of law, and to forward this item to city council for certification.
Second.
Loop, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass the resolution.